Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene the January tenth uh meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School Board of Trustees. We're reading from closed session. Welcome, everyone. We trust and hope that everyone continues to be safe and vigilant uh throughout this weather that we're doing and we are that we're having and we're grateful for this pause to be able to have this meeting and also for the community to kind of reset and and steady itself for the next round of rain that will be coming. So good evening and thank you for being with us here uh tonight. Uh now we will have language access.
Thank you very much. I will give this announcement in English and Spanish. In order to provide language access, we will be providing simultaneous bidirectional interpretation in English and Spanish. If you are bilingual, you do not have to click anything. If you are not bilingual in English and Spanish, you will have to select your language in order to hear the interpretation. If you are using a laptop or a desktop, at the bottom right of your screen, you will see a globe icon that says interpretation. Please click on the globe now and select English. If you are using an iPad or a phone, locate the three-dot menu and select Language Interpretation, then select English and click Done. And remember, when it's your turn to speak, please be loud and clear and speak at a moderate pace. Thank you. And we also have American Sign Language Interpretation for this meeting. And if you will be using ASL Interpretation, please use the Zoom app on your computer, tablet, or phone to join this meeting. If you joined this meeting through your web browser, you may not be able to see the ASL interpreter at all times.
Thank you for the language access information. Dr. Maldonado, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. And Sandra will put up a flag for us. Everybody, please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There was no action taken in closed session, so we will move to item D six Superintendent's Report. Dr. Maldonado.
Thank you again, Board President Sims Moten. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining our virtual meeting today. We do feel a little bit rusty at having another board meeting via Zoom. But we're going to make the go at it, given all the latest uh changes that have happened due to this week's intense storm. I want to start off by thanking all of our faculty and staff, their responsiveness yesterday and today um during this intense and dangerous storm front that came through our city. And our our cities, I should say. We both have Santa Barbara and Guelita. Um of course, the health and safety of everyone is our primary driver for the decision that we made yesterday to uh evacuate our schools and to close our schools for today, including today's meeting via uh via Zoom. Based on the extreme and unpredictable weather conditions expected in the morning hours, the continued road closures, uh flooding, our county sheriff, fire, and county and office of emergency management officials advised us to close our schools. And we considered the fact that we had so many uh road closures, ongoing rain with the maximum impact um as well as the the needs of our staff who lived in um the north side of our cities and the south side and their abilities to get home. Unfortunately, we did have some staff stranded overnight and I want to thank those of uh their colleagues who helped to put them up for the night, as well as those who worked in emergency operations to get some of the shelters in place. We also know that transportation was a big factor. I want to thank MTD and STA for getting their buses to our schools during the evacuation yesterday. And we are still continuing to work with them to make sure we have busing for tomorrow. A particular shout out goes to Kelly Hubbard from the County Office of Emergency Management, who also helped with giving us clear updates and support. I want to let the board know that part of the decision-making yesterday included the the listening to and participating on the eleven AM press conference where we were um informed about this evacuation. And it was a little bit confusing. We want to make sure we acknowledge that, you know, we did have a shelter in place immediately followed by an evacuation and and then continued shelter in place and as if if you've seen some of the news items and some of the things that did happen, we're grateful that there was no lives lost um in this, uh at least in our county or in immediate South County. And our hearts go out to those families that did lose some loved ones in the northern part of our county. Um in collaboration, of course, with uh Dr. Salsino from the county and all our South County superintendents, we all went ahead and made those decisions to close schools together, as well as releasing everyone. Thankfully, everyone got home safely. And uh I want to just acknowledge uh how quickly we had to move to make all those decisions. Again, with the the safety and health of all our staff and students as the pri- primary decision uh factor. A lot goes to our principals, a lot of credit for them, for them being able to also swiftly convene staff to release their students safely. And of course, our facilities, maintenance staff, who have been key to ensuring that no major damages to lives and property um happened yesterday and this uh afternoon, who they've all gone out to check all our facilities. Uh every facility has been checked. And uh this afternoon, we met with our principals to let them know that we will be reopening schools tomorrow. Um that has been communicated to all our families, to all our staff. We are continuing to work with um MTD. We know that there may be some driver shortages. We asked that families, please, if you can drive your students to school as we figure out the bus transportation, please help us out by doing that. Um and I would be remiss if I didn't also say that we understand and are aware that this comes on the five-year anniversary of the Manassero uh debris flow, and we want to make sure that we take a moment to remember and reflect on the lives lost uh in twenty eighteen as well. This has been a stressful time for many people. Uh we did send some um resources for anyone that needs help or counseling, or if your children need help. We want you not to hesitate to call us, uh reach out to your school counselors, your school principals, if you need some of that. And of course, look for communication in your emails for how to access any of that information. So I want to close by um bringing us back to normalcy is what I have heard many times said when crisis hits and um as people swiftly move and get us back to normal or as back or as close to normal as we can. I want to close this report by bringing up our heroes of the heart, which is our continued um practice here in Santa Barbara Unified, where we want to recognize all our employees who are going above and beyond and who do so much great work. I'm going to encourage everyone that as we come out of this crisis and we think about um how we move forward as we get all the cleanup done and we move into the face of cleanup, recovery, and return to normalcy, please nominate heroes of the heart. You can find uh how to do that in our email communication and on our website. So we can start with our first nominee. And that is Lynette Santana from Santa Barbara High School. She was nominated by her principal, Dr. Simmons. Lynette cares deeply for our students, especially our emergent multilingual learners. For many years, she spent dozens of hours during the summertime to ensure that all our emergent multilingual learners are strategically scheduled so that they can receive extra support. She's the point of contact for many of our families of emergent multilinguals and has created a home for our students. She's an amazing English language development and Spanish teacher. I also want to do a special shout out to Ms. Santana. I have visited her classroom and I can see as a former uh multilingual learner myself, how important teachers like Ms. Santana are to those of us who are new to the country and are learning so many new things. Thank you so much, Ms. Santana. Next, we have Sherry Bryan. Sherry Bryan is the librarian at Santa Barbara High School, also nominated by her principal, Dr. Simmons. She's been our library teacher for three years now, and she has transformed how the library is used by staff, students, and families. She also approaches all her work from a place of inclusivity and making sure that the library is a safe and welcoming space for all. Thank you so much, Ms. Sherry Bryan. Next, we have uh from Principal Veronica Binkley, we have Dr. Sean O'Brien. He is uh our esteemed consultant, so she so he works for Santa Barbara Unified as a consultant. He's been improving the educational experience for thousands of elementary students. Through a student-centered philosophy with an emphasis on the design cycle, he's collaboratively built over fifty-six-week thematic units to expose students at Harding, Cleveland McKinley, and Monroe to all the secondary career ticket pathways. There is one hundred percent engagement with hands-on learning, and he builds agency, language acquisition, and inquiry. Thank you so much, Dr. O'Brien. Next, we have Ms. Kendall Stevens, who's also our county teacher of the year, nominated by Mel Starks. Uh Kendall is a very cool and always trying her hardest and super-duper kind to all her students. She deserves this. Thank you, Kendall. I believe we've recognized Ms. Lori Brown, but she's nominated again, so she's obviously making an incredible impact over at Adams Elementary. Mrs. Brown has been wonderful as uh her son's second-grade teacher. We are new to the district, says Ms. Dawn Seymour. And I felt her energy, warmth, and amazing work ethic. She's gone above and beyond to make sure that my son has made a smooth transition, and we feel so grateful to have her as a teacher. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next, nominated by Rob Gohler is Mr. Mark Alvarado. He is working with our student support unit now, but he was formerly at San Marcos High School. Mr. Mark, ugh, let me start again, excuse me. Mr. Mark Alvarado has been the head of the Royal Center for Intervention at San Marcos High during his unprecedentedly challenging post-pandemic area era. During this time, he has worked diligently, progressively, and compassionately to support the needs of all students. He thinks, speaks, and acts from the heart in the most genuine way imaginable. As one student puts it, Mark is an outspoken person, a strong individual, a father figure, a man of principles, and a caring individual. Congratulations, and thank you, Mr. Alvarado. And last, from Santa Barbara Junior High, nominated by Mr. Kareem Battle, is Mrs. Mizetta. Mrs. Mizetta is piloting a pro- a program called The Nest, which is a mental wellness place for all students. It does not target specific kids except kids in need of a safe space to be. She provides time before school, at lunch, and after school to seventh and eighth-grade students so that they may feel more comfortable at school. Since COVID, we have done everything we can to help kids come back to school, and this allowed kids who are not fully comfortable with the school environment to have a place to work and talk and get counseling. Thank you, Ms. Mizetta, and thank you, Mr. Battle, for nominating her and letting us know about this wonderful place at Santa Barbara Junior High. Board members, this evening, I wanted to be able to also recognize our incredible uh group of nursing uh staff at schools, and we have moved their recognition to the next meeting, which we hope to be in person. So just a special shout out to our nurses. Thank you for being so great, and we'll we want to make sure we recognize you in person at our next meeting in January twenty-fourth. With that, I'd like to conclude my superintendent report. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Maldonado. That was a great report. Thank you for the update on obviously the the actions we had to take during the weather. Thank you for all the staff to make that happen, and it was a smooth transition. And we were able to get and make sure that students were home safe, as well as the staff, and that you also provided space for those who had to stay here. So appreciate that much. And then certainly concluding with congratulations to all the heroes of the heart. Always good to see and hear all of the wonderful things that everyone is doing and seeing the committed folks that we have uh in this district. Thank you so much uh for that positive uh report ending to your report. Um so next, we'll move to but board comments uh and correspondence. Uh board members, um comments and correspondence. Ms. Alvarez.
Yes, uh good evening, everyone, and welcome back. This is going to be a very interesting, but it will be a great twenty twenty-three. And uh first of all, uh thank you to admin, to all of our district cabinet, Dr. Maldonado, Mr. Vance, and everyone who worked behind the scenes yesterday. Uh we were getting conflicting information. Everybody was doing the best that they could under the circumstances. So thank you for all that work. Thank you to the teachers, the parents, uh the school-side administrators, and the students for your flexibility. Uh we keep learning every day, and every day we keep getting better. So thank you for that. And also, um yesterday was not only a difficult day because of the unexpected evacuations, but also because of the five-year anniversary of the debris flow, and that in itself brings a lot of, a lot of um memories, a lot of pain. And also for us to remember, to remember those lives that were lost, and also to keep appreciating our first responders for all the work that they do. So thank you uh to everyone for the work that they that they are doing to keep us safe. I know it's not, I know it's not easy. It it's difficult, and the flexibility is very much appreciated. And on a positive, another positive note is I hope everyone had a great holiday and had a had time to relax and get ready for the second half of the school year. So welcome, everyone, and uh let's get to it.
Board members, other board members that I'm seeing, making sure, training my eyes to like, I'm scanning the Zoom to make sure I'm not missing anyone. Ms. Munoz.
Yes, um yeah, first and foremost, just, you know, as a community and as a school uh school board, we certainly are concerned about the safety of all our students, families and staff, and the participation by everyone to get us through the week that we've had. Um I just want to, you know, also give um kudos to the efforts by the superintendent, by Hilda, by all our principals to communicate as well as possible as this, you know, storm was happening at the same time and decisions were were made and such. Um hoping that the rest of the week, we can, you know, return to school as usual and um and just know that we're certainly, you know, want to be of support as possible. And also um to the heroes, um thank you so much on the efforts that you make on a daily basis for our students. Thank you so, thanks, Ms. Moten.
Yes. Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you. Um I'll just echo many of the thoughts of my colleagues. Uh I want to say my thanks to Dr. Maldonado, to your cabinet, to the principals, the teachers, staff, parents. Um and then to our county and city partners, and it was, it was a lot of touch and go and figuring it out in the moment with the best information we had, and we I did a great job in retrospect, and I know there's still some recovery to be had, but all in all, I'm very proud of this community and how they came together in such a tough moment. Um for me, I'm looking forward to this year, and I'm looking forward to working with you all. Um you probably hear to my voice, I'm recovering a little bit from being a little bit under the weather, but I'm excited for this year and what we're going to do, and uh let's uh have a good meeting.
Awesome. Well, thank you, my, I just conclude in in a in a ditto, if you will, of my colleagues have said it all and given the the necessary, but I just want to add, thank you, students, for being patient with us. I know you had a day day off, and so just thank you for being patient with us and uh, you know, doing that and staying strong and looking forward to you coming back uh to class tomorrow. And again, as Ms. Alvarez has said, we're ready for the second half of the year. So thank you all. Uh next, we'll move to the student board member report.
Good evening, everyone. Um so I'm reporting to you in the middle of finals week. We're about to make the semester switch, which is really exciting for all of the junior high students and high schoolers. Um specifically, high schoolers, because I know everyone will be getting new classes next semester. So that's really exciting for all of us. And I want to again um give my heartfelt gratitude to all the district staff, all of the school faculty and staff members, community members, parents who have helped make this transition so um or as seamless as possible for all of us and and who continue to support us in every way that they can. I know that this is something that we are continuing to adapt to and continuing to find solutions to, and um I appreciate everyone so much for continuing to prioritize the students and prioritize our education um in all this, because I know it's far from easy. So thank you, everyone, for the work that you're doing. And I also wanted to report that um or thank Dr. Maldonado for speaking to this, but emphasize that in this time, there is a lot of trauma and a lot of hurt that may be resurfaced. Um so please, please seek help. Please reach out to counselors, reach out to a trusted adult on campus, reach out to your fellow peers, your fellow students. Um please get the help and get the support that you need. It is an extremely difficult time. We're all under a lot of stress and anxiety right now, so I urge everyone to find out what helps for them or helps them and um seek out those resources, because you deserve to feel as comfortable as you can in this pressing time. And in terms of the work that we've been doing, um last December, we did meet with the Superintendent Advisory Council, and we will have a meeting next week to discuss campaigns that we can take as a district to continue our movement against hate, against discrimination, um against prejudice and bias in our schools. So that's something that I'm really excited to be working on. As you all know, it's something that I am very passionate about, something I hold very close to my heart. So I'm excited to see that the prog- excited to see the progress we can make in that area. And I also want to finally end with my gratitude to all of the heroes of the heart. It's so heartwarming and it's so touching, every board meeting to see how many adults are so dedicated to their work and so dedicated to the students that they serve. And I have full confidence that um there are thousands and thousands of students that feel grateful for those individuals every single day. So thank you so much for the work that you do, and thank you for being the role models and community leaders that we need. Your work changes lives and changes futures. So thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to a great meeting.
Great. Thank you, Congress, for that student report. Always good to hear what's happening on the ground with our students, which is really where I've made focus, is where we in things that we do. So thank you. Uh next, we'll move to public comment uh for non-agenda matters within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education. Are there any public comments?
Thank you, President Sims Moten. We have two public comments. Um we have Laura Rhodes signed up, but she is not currently online. Um somebody go to the next person is Carrie Caulfield.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um I didn't. Do I get to turn on the camera?
No, just your your microphone is fine.
Okay, um I've commented before, and I just wanted to be a member um as a parent, parent of a teenager, a fifteen-year-old at DP and part of the Techwise SB group. I just wanted to continue to encourage the board to look at um the items that we're doing around uh mental health and technology. I'm really appreciative of what we've done with the OFF and Away program. I think that what I've heard at school has really helped teachers and kids to get to interact together face-to-face. Um that's great. That being said, as a parent, I'd love to be able to see um the ability to track data on the iPad of how much the iPad is used um for my student and from everything that we I've looked into, and I believe Techwise SB has looked into, there's no way to get any data on how long your student, your child, is on the iPad. There's there's a way to to block a few things, but at times, you know, they can use the iPad all night long. Um and I think this inhibits good sleeping, good resting. We all know about blue light, stepping away from technology. And these devices, as we've commented before, are made to be uh really addictive. So I want to encourage the board to allow parents to have data on their students. Um the board says, you know, we're very da- data-driven, but we don't have any data on how much usage all students across SB Unified use the iPads. Do we even know if they use them at midnight, one in the morning, et cetera, and not sleeping? So we really encourage that. Love to see a survey go out to parents of like, how much are you you know, arguing with your student or your teenagers around technology usage? But at the end of the day, I believe this is a mental health issue and something that the board should really look at um and keep encouraging us, just as I do with OFF and Away, is we might like the same OFF and Away at home so that we can have time as families and parents to be together and not just be told, oh, I'm on my iPad because I have homework. So I would give that statement to you just to consider, and I really appreciate you fitting me in with public comment. And again, I'm speaking as one parent, but also part of the Techwise Santa Barbara Committee.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment.
Okay, great. Thank you. And next, we'll move to acceptance of donations. Uh board members, do I have a motion to accept the donations for January tenth, twenty twenty-three? Ms. Alvarez.
I move that we accept the donations with gratitude.
Do I hear a second? Ms. Munoz, second? All in favor, say aye and raise your hand, just to be clear.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Motion passes. I need a little, oh, I'm still resting my hand to raise it up. So yeah, so thank you. Appreciate the patience. So next, we'll move to our consent agenda. Member, board members, do you have any agenda items you'd like to pull from the consent agenda tonight? Taking that as a none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as approved?
I move that we
As presented, really.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented, and thank you, Dr. Maldonado and staff, for answering the questions that we had ahead of time, so.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Doctor, I've made you a doctor, Mr. Escobedo. Thank you. All in favor, raise your hand. It's a aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you so much. Next, that actually moves us to our um action agenda. Item G one, approval of the University of California, Santa Barbara, converts a graduate school of education, proposed evaluation uh plan. Uh Dr. Maldonado, are you taking this? I want, it just says um student services, educational services. I know, given the conversation that we had last meeting, I don't know if you want to take the lead on this.
Well, yes, I I believe Dr. Sheffield can add a couple of statements. Let me have her uh open her camera. I do want to thank uh, do a special thanks to Jeff Mylum, the Dean of School of Education, and with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. Sheffield, Dr. Sheffield.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board President, School Board members, Cabinet, and community. I am uh happy to come back to you in regards to the UC Santa Barbara evaluation of our universal access program. Um we come back to you with a new proposal, um with some hard work and conversation with um the dean of the Graduate School of Education, Jeff Mylum. Um we were able to take that contract down to ninety-five thousand dollars, um which is down from the one sixty, I believe that it was before. Um I want to read a statement from um the dean. He said he's decided to assume a large portion of the cost internally within the school in honor of the partnership that he has and they have. And they value the evaluation activities that um they have in place with Santa Barbara Unified School District. He said it's not something they do on a regular basis, but they look forward to working with us in the future to support our students, as well as supporting the students at UC Santa Barbara. So they're very happy to work with us and continue to work with us and then take a big portion of the cost away so that we can move forward with uh providing the evaluation of our universal access program.
Okay. Board members, Dr. Maldonado, any more comments from you before I ask board members for any questions? Board members, any questions or comments, Mr. and Ms. Munoz? Rose?
Yes, um.
Yes, um, hi, thank you, Ms. Sims Moten. I want to, you know, express my appreciation to UCSB for absorbing the costs. I certainly value, um, highly value and want to see an evaluation of our universal access and how effective it is, and, you know, look at like steps for improvement and, um, and how our students are doing and so forth. So, I just really, you know, sincerely appreciate them understanding that and making such a substantial reduction in the cost. So.
Okay, thank you. Alvarez? Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, I, I was unmuting. So, thank you. Uh, first of all, thank you, Dr. Maldonado. Thank you, Dr. Sheffield and Mr. Vance, and I don't know, whoever else was working behind the scenes on, uh, renegotiating this cost. And thank you to UCSB. We appreciate your partnership, and I'm glad that we found, uh, a way to work together and to benefit both organizations. Also, as we discussed in, at the last board meeting on the proposal on the cover sheet, it said it was a three-year agreement. However, as we read, uh, the agreement, it's really two years. So, it was a typo that we found out it was a typo, so the cost remains, uh, remains, it was the one forty for two years, and now it's ninety-five thousand for two years. So, thank you for, for doing that. And then, in the agreement, uh, it talks about, uh, the evaluation and also not only of the universal access of that is being implemented at the moment, but also of other classes such as AP and dual enrollment. And one of my wonderings is there is already open access to these courses. So, will this study go into perhaps the reasons why students are not signing up for these courses? Or, or what angle will they be taking on this study?
Do you want me to take that, Dr. Maldonado? They, um, so right now, they're putting together the evaluation process. Really, they're looking at the angle of, number one, providing those traditional courses in our ninth, well, junior high, then ninth and tenth grade, and then looking at as they move on and move forward in the eleventh and twelfth grade, because the classes change once they get to the eleventh and twelfth grade. Once they get to the eleventh and twelfth grade, they have the traditional course, but then they have the offer to move into AP classes. So, looking at the decision-making in that regard, and so that will come with our, our conversation with them, as well as them talking to our students to identify why our students are moving in the directions that they're moving in, as well as looking at the students and the populations that are moving in that area also, and really pulling data to see what decisions are made and how those decisions are made, and ensuring that we're doing our absolute best to make sure all of our students have the absolute best opportunity to excel.
Great. Thank you. Uh, yeah, I saw that, that they'll be also evaluating AP classes, dual enrollment, which is, which is great, which is a good thing. And my, my interest, of course, is, so there is already open access right now, and I'm, I'm interested in finding out how that's going to change or why, maybe finding out the why. We may, we may not, why not, a larger number of students are not accessing those courses, even though the, the access is already open. So, I look forward to that, to that study. So, thank you, everyone, for your work.
Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no additional comments or, oh, Mr. Escobedo? You're on mute.
I think Kavi had her hand up first, if she wants to go first.
Kavi, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I just had a few questions.
Okay, sorry, missed you.
Very good. Um, thank you so much. So, I have two questions. First, what's going to happen once this, like, data is presented to us? Is that going to, like, lead the district in a new initiative? Or, um, you know, what is that data going to really lead to after we understand it? And then, secondly, um, I know that they said that they're going to be looking at things like GPA, enrollment in advanced classes, all of that. And then also, they're going to be conducting like focus groups and getting qualitative data. Um, do they have like a plan already for how they're going to be getting students? Yeah, or do, are they going to come to a board meeting and like present more about the evaluation plan, um, just so we can get like more information about what the evaluation is actually going to look like?
So, we are at the very beginning stages. We needed to get this board approval prior to completely developing and identifying who's on the panel and those specific questions. They didn't delve deep into the work to identify those specific questions as of yet. So, yes, they will, um, be developing the evaluation process, developing the, uh, the groups in conjunction and in, in, uh, collaboration with our Ed Services Department. So, we have some experts in our department that, that could definitely help guide that direction, um, in order to identify who to talk to, who would be, you know, what teachers, as well as what students we need to work with. So, hopefully, that answers your question in that regard. As far as after we do this evaluation, what are the next steps? Well, that depends on the data that we receive. It is definitely to inform us. It is definitely to, uh, allow us to really delve deeper into knowing how universal access is working with our students. And then, if we need to make steps, uh, make next steps or changes, that will open the door for that. Or if we're doing absolutely amazing, how do we continue to do that amazing work? So, really, the next steps are truly understood once we get the evaluation completed.
Thank you so much, Dr. Sheffield.
All right. That concludes your question. So, Dr. Escobedo, Dr. Mr. Escobedo?
All right. I like where this is going. Um, thank you, uh, and I wanted to state just for the public's knowledge that the last time this item came to us, I recused myself, um, um, from this item because of a potential conflict of interest. We got legal advice, and the opinion was that I did not have to recuse myself for this item. So, I just have a few comments about this item in particular. It came back, and I have extreme gratitude for Dr. Maldonado, Dr. Sheffield, anyone who worked on negotiating with UCSB for this agreement. Coming back with this, uh, reduced price, um, is fantastic. I do want to express the opinion that, uh, UCSB and the School of Education, they are a partner. And, um, I, as, as was stated earlier, we got this even bigger discount, um, because they are a partner. The previous price was a very reasonable price, and had we gone to a private, uh, consultant agency, we would have gotten a much higher price. We got that, that hundred and forty thousand for two years, because it's an educational partner, um, here in our backyard. We're fortunate enough to have so many higher education institutions in our backyard. And as a partner with UCSB and the School of Education, I'm wary that in the future, we're going to try and drive down to the lowest price, forcing them to absorb many of these costs, when in actuality, that's not always a reality for the School of Education, for other higher education institutions and programs. And so, um, I'm glad that it worked out this time. It's just, uh, making sure that our expectations are realistic in the future, that it may not always be the case that we can get a lower price, especially when the original quote was, in my opinion, pretty reasonable. But I'm excited for this. I'm excited to get that information. Um, and I just wanted to thank, uh, Dr. Maldonado, Dr. Sheffield for, uh, really moving this item forward, and I can support this today.
Thank you. I appreciate the, uh, comments and questions, and thank you for the presentation, Dr. Maldonado and Dr. Sheffield. And again, for all who involved in working this, that it eventually, essentially serves the best interest of our students, and that's the information, uh, that we need to have that. So, am I the only one? Am I froze?
Uh, Ms. Sims Moten, that was mine to make a comment?
Uh, yes, please.
Yes, um, yes, I certainly, I agree with Mr. Escobedo. I was, um, in support of this at the last board meeting, um, this study by UCSB. So, certainly, I, I, um, could not agree more with, uh, Mr. Escobedo, that, that we don't expect them to reduce the rate, um, and so forth in, in the future. Um, thank you.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, um, so in the future, we, it would be a great idea to get comparisons. This way, everyone is treated fairly. Um, it's really hard to, uh, compare, make a statement for me, whether it's, I think it's a partnership, and I think it's great that we have partners. At the same time, I do believe comparisons are always good to get at least two proposals, just like we do with many other of our district functions. The requests for proposals are always good, and knowing that this is coming, it would be good to prepare ahead of time. So, I'm, I'm glad that we're moving forward, and in the future, it would be good to get comparisons.
I appreciate your comments. Please, appreciate this discussion, as we sometimes have to take things, one thing at a time, depending on the situation. I know we were trying to, to move forward, uh, on this, on this item, and we're here now to move it forward. So, can I get a motion to approve this, uh, the motion to approve the, um, motion before us?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve UCSB's proposed evaluation plan, uh, to Santa Barbara Unified School District for Universal Access, um, model.
Second.
And can I add to that, that it's ninety-five thousand for two years? Just want to make sure we have the amount in the term.
Yeah.
Uh, to that motion. And, uh, Mr. Escobedo, were you going to do a second?
Second.
Okay, okay. All in favor? Say aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. All right, motion passes. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to item G. Dr. Beckio for item two, board action, uh, excuse me, the Human Resources Recommendations.
Yes, good evening, Board President Sims Moten. Just attest that you can hear me.
Yes.
All right, good evening, board members and Superintendent Maldonado. Thank you for the opportunity to present the, uh, HR recommendation list. This is a list of the HR transactions that, um, we have made over the last, um, several weeks, and it's being presented to you, um, as the board for consideration and, and ultimately for approval tonight. I did want to make a couple, I did want to, uh, point out a couple, um, key transactions, um, that are worth noting. Uh, first of all, we do have Shelley Blau, um, on here as a retiree. Um, she served, I, I believe it was twenty-three plus years, and, uh, she's a teacher in the WIN program. So, we want to, um, thank her, and we appreciate the work that she did in the WIN program. I also want to point your attention to the promotions section, where we have, um, Derek Correa, uh, is being promoted from Para One to Para Two. And we also have, um, Margarita Rodriguez, who's, um, being promoted from an admin support tech to a family engagement liaison at La Cuesta, should be working with families there. I also want to point out, um, just a couple, um, noteworthy transactions under premium pay, where we have, um, Eric Flores, who is, uh, going to be receiving a bachelor's degree premium pay. And then also the two, um, language premium pay. So, these are bilingual stipends for, uh, Chris, Christina and Miguel Hernandez and the Pines. Um, their skills in that area. And then, lastly, I would like to just point your attention once again to the substitute section, where we have quite a few subs we're bringing on. Um, I do want to mention to the board that there has been, um, approximately sixty new hire subs since the beginning of the school year. So, um, we're seeing a good, good trend in that, um, area. Uh, with that, I'm going to turn the list over, the HR recommendation list over to the board for any questions you might have. Board President Sims Moten, if, um, if in the motion, uh, a board member wouldn't mind, um, adding a correction, um, it would save us, it would allow us to get started on Derek Correa's, uh, promotion. And, um, that should state range thirty, rate is twenty-three point three four. And with that correction, we can move forward with that.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Beckio. Any comments or questions, board members? Oh, Dr. Hildel?
Thank you. Sorry, before board members, uh, come on, I do want to acknowledge the work of both Dr. Beckio, Ms. Pe- Ms. Anne Peak, uh, and Mr. Vince. This is another example of part of the collaboration with UCSB is that we are getting a lot of substitutes who are current student teachers. We heard that in our listening tours with many of our staffs at different schools, who gave us this idea of like, how can we help to prioritize, uh, or maybe fast-track some of our student teachers who can also be substitutes? So, I just want to acknowledge that work behind the scenes, um, of the HR team led by Dr. Beckio and Mr. Vince, and in partnership with UCSB. So, we have, uh, created a new pathway for us to be able to meet with the students at UCSB, give them, uh, give them the information on how they can become substitute teachers, and then we're collaborating around all the requirements that they need to have before they become processed as substitutes. So, I want to give a special thanks to the HR team, to the teachers at the school size that gave us that idea, and also for everyone else to just help process so many of those folks to help out.
Thank you. Board members, any comments? Oh, Dr. Beckio?
Thank you so much. Just to follow up on that, because, um, that, that is worth mentioning. Um, I did, we did send an HR team to UCSB. I believe it was the, on the fourth of January. Um, we actually did a clinic out there where we signed. Um, we, we had people fulfill the onboarding paperwork. These are student teachers who now can sub for their cooperating teacher. Um, we also, uh, had a mobile, um, fingerprint unit show up there, and we got about thirty, um, co- uh, thirty student teachers signed up and through the process in that one afternoon. And again, that was a, a great partnership with, um, the UCSB Teacher Education Program and, and our staff. So, um, thank you for reminding me of that, Dr. Maldonado, and those are a few more details about that.
Board members, any comments and questions? Sina, I just want to add, thank you so much for, uh, having the Human Resources Report in the action agenda, so we can really talk about that and elevate what's going on. And one of our most, one of our largest parts of our budget is, is our resources and our human resources aspect. So, I really appreciate the report that comes behind it. Certainly want to congratulate the retirees and those who are being promoted and the new subs that are coming on. Thank you for saying yes, and the efforts that are going out at UCSB. So, always going forward in the things that we're wanting to do. So, thanks to all the hard work and commitment and steadfast, continue going toward that. With that, can I have a motion with the correction, uh, kind of a motion from the board members with the correction of, from, what is it, twenty-three? What were you saying, Dr. Beckio? I just want to make sure I have the number right.
Yes, thank you. That would be, um, the promotion, promotion of Derek Correa. It would be range thirty, step five.
Okay.
Rate is twenty-three point three four.
Okay. With that correction, do I have a motion, board members? Ms. Alvarez?
Uh, so moved with the correction as, uh, presented by Dr. Beckio.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Escobedo, all in favor, say aye, raise your hand to be sure we got everybody.
Aye.
For that presentation, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Next, we're moving to item G three, board action on student discipline. There any abstentions or conflict of interest on this item before we call for the motion? Ms. Alvarez?
I'd like to recuse myself from this item.
Okay. All right. Ms. Munus, are you willing to make the motion?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion. Apologies, I'm having a problem with my video. Um, motion to approve student discipline, education code four-eight-nine-one-eight, case number twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three dash oh-three.
Has been motion and second with an abstention. Uh, let me do a roll call. Uh, Sandra, can you do a roll call on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Board member Alvarez?
Abstain.
Board member Munos?
Y- yes.
Board member Escobedo?
Yes.
Board member Sims Moten?
Yes. Yes. Thank you, Sandra. Motion passes three with one exception. Okay, we'll next move to um item G four, approval and ratification of the GeoSynTech contract. Superintendent's office to report.
Good evening, good evening, President Sims Moten, good evening, Board members and Superintendent Maldonado. Uh, so um I'm here to talk about the approval and ratification of uh the GeoSynTech contract. So uh, beginning of December, we were notified regarding staff health and cancer concerns at DP High School. Particularly those staff members who are working um in the administration building. Um, once we were notified of this information, we immediately contacted Santa Barbara County Public Health. Um, and we have been continually working with them and uh working closely specifically with the Director of Environmental Health Services, Lars Seifert. Um, he provided a list of highly recommended certified industrial hygienists to do an environmental health assessment on the campus. We were also in contact with Sisk, our insurance provider. And uh they also provided us a list of certified industrial hygienists. Uh, what we did was we reviewed the list, we contacted all of the organization, uh, excuse me, all of the organizations and agencies. Uh, and then we narrowed it down specifically to GeoSynTech, which really uh is a firm that specializes in environmental risk assessments. Uh, they have done extensive um assessments within school districts and schools. Uh, and they do know how to thoroughly do um an investigation with this. Uh, so we contacted them and they provided us a proposal. Um, because this is new territory for the district, we really relied on the expertise of Santa Barbara County Public Health. So I contacted Lars Seifert and asked him to actually review the SynTech uh uh proposal with his team, so with his epidemiologist's team. And so they reviewed the proposal and what they basically said was that it was a really reliable assessment, particularly in this field. So it was considered a gold standard. The other thing about this is that uh GeoSynTech, uh even though they're um an international organization, they are based in Santa Barbara. So they were able to actually uh expedite the process in order to avoid any disruptions or to make sure that we get complete samples uh at the high school. And they were able to do that during the winter break, which was really perfect timing for for us with them. So they they proposed to start on Monday, December nineteenth. So with that in mind, uh, Dr. Maldonado signed the contract with GeoSynTech using the superintendent's emergency authorization due to the safety situation there. Uh, we also contacted Sisk and Sisk did confirm that they would split the cost of the environmental assessment with the district. So um even though that the cost will go up to a hundred and sixty-two thousand seven hundred dollars, uh, the district uh will be paying up to eighty-one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, exactly half of that. So with that being said, GeoSynTech, they actually completed the collection of the inside air, outside air, as well as soil samples there on the campus during the school break. Uh, and they have sent those samples to the various labs to do the analysis. And they're waiting to receive the results of those um results. And then upon receiving that, uh, they'll take the information and their analysis of the history uh there where DP is located. We're looking at various um documentation regarding that. And then what they will do is they will come, they will create a complete report with that. We will share the report with public health because we also want to make sure that we're understanding the report fully. And then as well, GeoSynTech will be able to work with us as we communicate to the community and staff at DP High School. So with all of that being said, uh, I'm recommending the approval and the ratification of the contract up to eighty-one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Um, for actually the total contract, sorry, it which would be a hundred and sixty-two thousand seven hundred dollars with uh GeoSynTech. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vince, for that report. Board members, any comments, questions? Ms. Alvarez?
First of all, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Maldonado. Thank you, Mr. Vance, uh, Mr. Woodard and everyone else uh who was part of getting this uh started so quickly. I communicated with Mr. Woodard and he expressed his appreciation for the district staff, quick response and and being there and taking this so serious. So thank you very much for doing that. Um, a couple of questions. Do you have any idea when we might expect the results of the soil samples? The studies that they take, number one. And then number two, a comment, uh, a big shout out to our fiscal uh services, Ms. uh Kim Hernandez and her team, because this really shows the importance of us having reserves for unexpected situations such as this one. We don't have to think about where this is going to be funded or whether we can fund it. We can move immediately and taking care of it. And also, thank you for reaching out to Sisk, our insurance carrier, which in this case, of course, it helps us a lot to share not only the financial burden, but also to get their their opinion, their expertise and their suggestions of what to do next. So, thank you. And uh the question, any idea when we might get the results?
Yes, and and before that, I I also want to add two more thank yous. One to Craig Price for immediately helping us with this, as well as um uh Marina and JJ with facilities actually helping us um uh vet the various organizations too. So I just want to throw that out there as well. So um regarding the report, uh, they officially stated that everything would be received by February fifteenth. However, they're actually moving faster than that, so that we should be getting some of the information they're projecting by the end of this week or next week. So it seems like they are moving much faster than what they officially stated. So as soon as we get this information, we'll be sharing it with everybody.
Great, thank you. Any other comments, Board members, or questions? Okay, see, and again, thank you so much, Mr. Vince, and all that you have mentioned, uh, and getting this in the diligence and the the expeditious way in which you went about uh getting this to us and making sure that we were able to do that. Appreciate the process that allowed you to go forth with that without having to come to the board before. So I just want to appreciate that process as well. Um, so with that, can I, I want to entertain a motion to approve this item? Ms. Alvarez?
I move that we approve this item as presented.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion pass, motion passes. Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Vince. Uh, Board members, we will take a break now that we have concluded our action agenda. We'll take a ten-minute break and coming back to start on uh item H. Thank you. Okay, I see the board member is back. Um, we will move to now H one under report and discussions, the ETS Technology Update. Dr. Maldonado, who's going to be providing us with that report? It doesn't, oh, somebody's got it already. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Tony Ramirez, our Chief Technology Officer, will be presenting this item to the board. As you know, he's been with us only a couple of months, but he has already made some ground with some of the the work that we had started last year and previous year, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ramirez.
Thank you. Good evening. Quick mic test. Can you hear me all right? Awesome. Well, good evening, Board President Sims Moten, Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Maldonado. Tonight, I'm excited and I'm proud to share uh many important updates uh through technology of of or just a few of the many that we've been working on um in just the last few months. So uh next slide, please. Maybe we can scroll down that cyclopedia.
Sandra, are you or are you unable to scroll down on the PDF to the next slide? Bear with us, everyone, as we get our legs back on to our Zoom board meeting.
Yep.
Hi, Dr. Maldonado. This is Adriana. I'll go ahead and share my screen.
Thank you, Adriana.
Awesome, great. So picking up where we left off. So in the first thirty to sixty days of of my arrival here in Santa Barbara back in September, uh, myself and the interim director of ETS, Mr. Rob Cooper, had the opportunity to visit all of our school sites. Uh, we talked with the site admins, the technology leadership at each school site to discuss technology plans, challenges and goals for the year. And from these collaborative discussions, we focused on many areas of improvement, but tonight I'd like to highlight instructional technology. Also like to talk about our one-to-one tech equity program and last but not least, our cybersecurity efforts. So next slide, please. So with regard to instructional technology, the ETS team has been working diligently along all of our school sites to review all of our instructional technology platforms. Through this, both an elementary and secondary technology committee, who are recently formed, to continue this collaboration, to develop a more robust software approval process and vetting process for all of these different applications to make sure that they're being used effectively, that are cost-effective and that even when we go to renew, that we have the right data to justify that use. Uh, we also want to make sure that each platform is age-appropriate, is subject-relevant as well. So in this process, we've already beginning begun to clean up many of our different platforms. One uh being YouTube. So recently, we've deemed the YouTube app um not necessarily relevant to the classroom, so we've had to remove that app because it was rated as a seventeen-plus app. So things like that, we're we're zeroing in on and making sure that we're um aligned with our instructional technology. Additionally, through feedback from the school sites, the Canvas Learning Management System uh was deemed uh needed for training and support. So ETS has doubled down on our efforts to support this platform. As you know, we rolled this out as a pilot a few years back and since grown in the use of this application. This year, we've fully implemented Canvas across the board at every grade level. So ETS has uh developed a robust training and professional learning plan. And that involves workshops and webinars and on-demand's on-demand self-paced training. So a menu of these resources have been um outlined and communicated to all of our teachers to take advantage of, so they need. And this will continue to be offered as long as there is a need for this additional training and support. Next slide, please. Moving on to our tech equity one-to-one program, ETS has formed a team that meets weekly to revisit the plans and processes for ensuring that all students have safe, secure and reliable technology, not just in the classroom, but also at home. This team will continue to collaborate ongoing with our elementary and our secondary technology committees to enhance the process for device distribution at the beginning and the end of the year, the repairs, the app requests, and what the annual refresh plan looks like as far as the procurement of additional devices. So we are excited to adopt a more concrete plan. Things got mixed up around the COVID era, so we're excited to um have a more robust plan going forward to prepare for a successful rollout of all of our devices to our students. Next slide, please. Last but not least, a key area of focus for our team right now is uh cybersecurity. We have hit the ground running. We've developed a cyber task force. We meet bi-weekly to collaborate on resources and strategies to harden our district's security posture. This uh task force has developed a cyber roadmap and has already identified many different vulnerabilities and marching orders to take care of some of our um security holes and vulnerabilities. So we are excited to get started on or continue to work on that. Uh, one of the great things we're doing right now is um joining many collaborative resources. One is the Multi-State Information Sharing Center. And this is a branch of the Department of Homeland Security that provides a an abundance of free resources for K-12 institutions like ourselves for preventing and detecting cyber threats, but also free documentation and templates on making sure that we have the best plans in place and um strategies in the event that a cyber incident does happen. So as a part of this effort, we have been researching, evaluating and piloting several different security platforms for our iPads for our tech equity program. This is to add additional security, but also content filtering, not just at home or not just at school, but at home. So over the last thirty days, we've successfully piloted a new platform over at La Colina Junior High School. And the overwhelming feedback from the teachers and even some students was that it is working, which is great. So we are very excited to to bring this forward to the next um at the next board meeting for approval for use district-wide. And we will, uh, I I imagine this is going to be a huge benefit for not just our teachers and our students, but also for um our families, because this platform will provide additional options. Um, right now, we have uh tools and guides that we promote the use of for our families, but they are limited. So through feedback from our parent community and our tech use committee, we know this is a need. So we are excited to bring more of these capabilities and um student uses data and also additional learning opportunities for our families as well. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned from the start, this is just a quick taste of many of the initiatives that ETS is working hard on right now. And I must say, I'm extremely impressed with the team, the amount of projects they're juggling behind the scenes to keep Santa Barbara up and working through disasters, through catastrophes, is just astounding. So my hat goes off to them. I wanted to publicly thank them, but also thank the board for your continued support in all of our efforts towards technology. This concludes my brief update, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez, for that report. Uh, Board members, any comments and questions? Ms. Alvarez?
First of all, thank you, Mr. Ramirez, for such a thorough update. And as I had talked to Dr. Maldonado before, I'm I'm very happy to hear that you have been visiting all the sites. And I look forward to hearing about other cabinet members, their activities and how they're getting to know our our community and all the new initiatives that you are doing. Um, I'm very grateful for that and and thank you for doing an assessment, taking inventory of what's in place and how we, what we need to do different and also collaborating with the sites as well and and bringing this new and improved platform forward. So thank you very much for doing that and I look forward to hearing more updates uh in regarding to technology and of course, our students and our staff and our cybersecurity, which is so important to all of us. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Board members, any other additional comments or questions?
Um, if I can just um echo what Board Member Alvarez was saying, thank you so much, Mr. Ramirez, for that report. And thank you for, you know, not only considering what the staff and faculty have to say, but I know you spoke to students at La Colina, um, were in support of the new cybersecurity platform. So that really means a lot that you're um, you know, going out of your way to make sure that you're getting feedback from the people who are using technology for some different reasons than um, you know, the adults might be using the technology. So thank you for that. And I know that, you know, growing up in a tech world, tech universe where, you know, we use it for almost everything that we do every day, it just kind of is there and it's so accessible and it's so convenient. I know that a huge concern that comes about is the security aspect of it. And there is education out there and we do learn about our digital footprint and all of that stuff. But I think, you know, there can never be enough. So thank you again for including that piece, that it's not just about how do we improve access to technology, how do we make technology effective, but also about how do we ensure people understand how to use it responsibly in the long term? And the way to go about that is through education. So thank you so much for including that in your report. And I'm really, really excited to hear more about what ETS is working on. Thank you again to the whole team that's working on this. I know that there are many strong feelings out in the community about the way we use technology in our schools. So thank you for being so responsive.
The comments. You know, I'll just do a final comment. I just want to echo the comments just been spoken and just appreciate the fact that you've been here for such a short time and just your approach to this. You know, I think sometimes we live in an instant world, so we want instant results. But I just really appreciate you taking the time, the necessary time to listen and to really not just react to, but really be responsive to what you're hearing out there. So I too look forward to this continued and the next, you know, the next report back to the board. And again, keeping our kids safe at the same time, being responsive to the world that they're living in, what they're growing up in, and how do we do that? So I just wanted to appreciate just the time and the approach that you're taking to this task. So thank you for that report and hearing no additional request to speak on it. We'll move to item H2, the first reading and discussion of board policy 1150, accommodations, accommodations and awards. This is coming through. Okay, Dr. Beckio is on this one?
Board President Sims Moten, board members, I am bringing before you two board policies. Just, just as background information, when we periodically, we bring forward board policies for updates or new board policies, and we will bring them forward on the report discussion or public hearing so that, so that the board and the public has an opportunity to give input. So tonight, these are being brought forward for your consideration to give input. And, and then we will bring them back for the next meeting at the board's direction, either as an action item, public hearing, or a consent item. So we'll maybe get some direction from you at the end. This first one, Board Policy 1150, you'll notice it's, these are both short board policies, but they're really important ones. This is really, there's three components to this. One is that this board policy outlines that the board can recognize either parents, community members, organizations, outside groups. As you know, we partner a lot with outside entities, and so this gives the board the opportunity to, or the authorization to recognize those groups. The other is that someone can recommend that we recognize, that the board recognizes someone, and that recommendation would go to the superintendent. And that the board also can, can give a letter, certificate, or other type of award in recognition of a parent guardian, community member, or outside organization. So that's the gist of Board Policy 1150. Happy to turn that over to board members for any input that you might have on that.
Board members, any comments or questions regarding this? I just had a question if I am not seeing any hands. Mr. Beckio, Dr. Beckio, is this also regarding our including naming? You know, there's many types of, like, for instance, we name our stadiums, we name, does this include that, or is that a separate policy?
I am pretty certain that that falls under a different board policy, and it would not be anything that we need to include in this one. And I do see head nod from our superintendent on that.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes. Well, first of all, thank you, Dr. Maldonado, and thank you, Dr. Beckio, for bringing this forward. I think it's extremely important as we build community relations, partnerships, and also our employees, the morale in that we show appreciation that you're bringing this policy forward. So first of all, thank you for being proactive and for doing that. And then I do have a question, which maybe it might be more to the next item. So I'll wait till you present the other item, and then I'll ask the question. And you can tell me whether it's for Board Policy 1150 or for 4156.2. So I'll wait till you present.
Okay.
Okay, so here no additional comments. So Dr. Beckio, are you hoping to bring that, let's be a clarification or additional question for Mr. Alvarez? Are you hoping to bring this back for approval on the consent agenda, or does it need to have a second reading, or?
Well, some board policy like this, if there's not a lot of tweaks that need to happen, I would recommend we bring it back on consent. If there's more work to be done on it, which doesn't seem to be the case on this particular one, then we may want to spend more time on it. So we would just have to judge that based on the board's guidance.
Okay, great. Thank you. So here no additional comments on this side, and we'll move to H3 for the reading discussion of Board Policy 4156.2, awards and recognitions. Dr. Beckio?
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. And this, this board policy is really targeted at and, and then it also outlines, as you'll notice, the criteria for the awards that may be granted to employees. This is really important. Some, some common examples, for example, each year, we, we issue service pins to our employees. That, that, those service pins are really nice pins that have a, you know, their years of service number on them. So 10 years, 15 years, 30 years, et cetera. And so, and then among other things that that we may use, such as a retiree recognition tee, where we do have staff time spent on an event like that, and there's funding that is, that we need to find to be able to spend on, on those different types of awards or recognitions. So that's what this board policy covers. And I'll turn it over to the board for any comments.
Okay. Board comments or questions, Ms. Alvarez?
So yes, this was actually my, my question. The board needs to authorize, if I understand this correctly, the board needs to authorize district staff to spend on, for example, buying the pins, the service pins, or, or maybe even a plaque. I think as this policy says, a plaque would be, would be very nice acknowledging somebody's service, somebody that's been there for a long, long time. And this policy would give you that authority, Dr. Beckio, is that what your, is that what this policy is? Do I understand it correctly?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so my, my question, and which I think is great, by the way, I think I'm so glad we're doing this. And will this policy also include if Dr. Maldonado or somebody in the cabinet would want to hold, for example, recognition, a small reception to thank our volunteers, our service organization, our donors? Will this policy also cover that as well?
I believe that what you're referring to may be more contained in Board Policy 1150 under the partnerships, volunteers, community members, et cetera.
Okay, so my, my wondering is we, I, I would feel better if we make it more specific that we include in this, for example, in this awards and recognition and authority so that Ms. Hernandez and Dr. Maldonado have a budget item every year that's included in the budget specifically for this purposes, not to exceed annual amount. And this way, it's clear for everyone that yes, there's a budget item, and there's a not to exceed amount for this specific activities. So that's what my suggestion, and I'd like to hear other board members' thoughts on this.
Yeah, I agree with that, because that was going to be my, my next question in terms, where are we going to put a not to exceed amount on both of them? With that, you know, in terms of that, so that we're clear about that, it's real clear to the public how much we're spending. It's clear to anyone who's looking at those budgets. Because the other question would be, because these are one of those things, although very, very important, these are one of those things, if not really given that specificity, falls by the wayside when hard times come. And I think we always need to make sure we recognize, and it is, it's a part of the budget discussion, right? Even though we might have to make reductions, but it's there. So I think it's important to add that additional point to it so that it stays, it's sustainable in that way through our budget process.
And one of my, my thoughts was, and of course, this is a suggestion, in speaking with district staff and Dr. Maldonado, some not to exceed a budget item of $30,000 a year.
I would ask, what's, what's historically been the spending and what, I mean, you know, what's been the, the, we know we look at estimates, but what's been the actual, the actual spending, and do we need to adjust it accordingly? So we have some history of what's been spent before. I would ask, did that be part of the discussion as well?
I do, I do not have that number off the top of my head. So what we will, what I will do is research that as part of these two board policy items and bring that back to the board as a recommendation. And I would, I would probably recommend also in line with that, that we put these then on the action agenda rather than consent.
Sure. Other board members' comments? Okay, good on that.
Mr. Ramirez?
Yes.
Just wanted you to know that I did speak with Ms. Hernandez and Sandra and Adrian in my office about this. And as Dr. Beckio said, we will bring those amounts. I do want to just acknowledge that, that is not something that since I arrived, we really had much time and/or resources dedicated to because of everything we've been through, needless to add to why. But we did come up with this number based on a little bit of what things cost and what things that have been mentioned by Ms. Alvarez around the kinds of things we want to do for staff, recognition, hosting, hosting events, thanking different groups and recognizing them through different items that we can purchase. So that, that number of not to exceed 30,000 seems reasonable, always keeping in mind that we can look for ways to have also donors that maybe help with some of this is how we've been sort of operating. So if we need to do, if you need us to bring more information, we can certainly do so for our next meeting for the second reading.
No, I don't need to. I didn't even realize that you had done that. So I was just trying to make sure that we weren't undercutting what you needed. So if you've already done the research and feel that's a fair, fair assessment of what you need to do to carry forth, then I'm fine with that. You don't need to do additional research or bring additional, at least from my part. I was just to make sure that we weren't under-budgeting you just because we hadn't, really didn't know that number. But if you're good with that, and you've, you've talked to the folks involved, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so not seeing any corners, not seeing any, okay, all right. So, all right, thank you both for, for that information. Looking forward to bringing those two back on the action agenda. So now we'll move to H4, the first reading of sunshine, you have the Santa Barbara Teachers Association to reopen contract negotiations with the Santa Barbara Unified School District. Dr. Beckio, I'm assuming this is you?
It is. Thank you, Board President Sims Moten. I have a short little presentation for the board, and I just wanted to spend a couple minutes so that everyone has the same basic information before we move into the, my discussion about the two sunshine proposals. So collective bargaining, you see that in front of you. I just want to raise it up a level and talk about labor relations in general and let the board know that you and the superintendent have designated me as the chief labor relations and negotiator rep for the district. And in that, I wanted to share with you that my approach to labor relations and collective bargaining is done so with, with a fundamental value that, that I think is really critical to the process. And so I wanted to share that with you. You know, this, this value, I lead with it. I make decisions based on it. I communicate with our labor partners with this value in mind. And that is that both the labor partners and the school district have a common interest. We both have a deep interest in the well-being of our employees. And with, and it's with that common interest that I always enter into our labor relations discussions or collective bargaining with our labor partners. And so I wanted to make sure the board knew that, because I think that that leads to, and has led to very solid labor relations with our district and our labor partners, and also very good language and decisions that actually benefits our employees. And those are the people doing the important work with our kids and families. And so I will continue to do that, but I want, did want to share that approach with you. If you go to the next slide, you'll see that this is just basic information. We're governed, our collective bargaining labor relations is governed by the Education Employment Relations Act, or EERA. And that basically established collective bargaining in California. And so next slide. I wanted to just bring forward the three types of negotiations that there are. This is, this is a very basic level understanding, but the first is what we call successor contract negotiations. And this, this type, this negotiation happens when we're about to adopt a brand-new contract. And typically, our contracts are three-year terms, and all the language in them is negotiated. So we look at all the articles, we clean up the collective bargaining agreement, and we bargain whatever articles we want to in those successor negotiations. We then adopt a three-year contract, and that language is what we operate on for the term of that contract. However, each year, we do have the opportunity to reopen at least two articles in that, in that contract or collective bargaining agreement. I put three reopeners here, but we basically reopen health and welfare every, or I'm sorry, wages and health and welfare every year as automatic, and then two other reopeners. And so then we engage in re-opener contract negotiations where we are reopening a certain article just to look at that article and negotiate that article. This, the sunshine proposals before you do say re-opener, because we are going to be in re-opener contract negotiations. So those are identifying, they're sunshining, if you will, to the public and the board, the articles that the, the teachers' union intends to negotiate and what we intend to negotiate. If you go down to effects bargaining, this is, this is the type of bargaining that happens when the district is going to make a, a pretty significant decision that will affect the working conditions of employees or that could affect the working conditions of employees. And so typically, we will, we have an obligation to notify our labor partners, and then they, they can express their intent to engage in effects bargaining, basically bargaining the effects that our decision will have on employees. And next slide. And I also just wanted to mention what your role as board is in the, in the negotiation process. You do designate with the superintendent a chief labor negotiator, which is me. You also provide guidance and direction to me and to the superintendent. And typically, this occurs in closed session under those agenda items. And then you are the ultimate authority for the district. So you approve, for example, the sunshine proposals and any tentative agreements that we reach with our labor partners have to be brought to the board for approval, and that, that's your role in this. So tonight, we're going to ask you to just consider, because the sunshine proposals come, just kind of like board policies, they come to you as a discussion item, and then we will bring them back as a public hearing. And then we will bring them onto an action agenda for you to approve the sunshine proposals. So with that, the item H4 is for the first reading of the Santa Barbara Teachers Association reopeners. And so this is the letter addressed to the school board that expresses the intentions of our Santa Barbara Teachers Association and what they intend to open in terms of articles in the contract. And you'll notice that they have selected hours and conditions, class size, and leads. And so I'm happy to turn the item over for any public comment or board comment or input.
Sandra, are there any public comments on this item?
There's no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any comments or questions? Did I, oh, there is Alvarez. Tavia, did I see your hand go up? No? Okay, okay. Mr. Escobedo, just wanted to make sure. Didn't miss you this time.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, Dr. Beckio, that presentation was amazing, especially from a new board member perspective, but also thinking through the lens of a community member. When you're talking about something like labor negotiations, that can be somewhat convoluted. When you're talking about something like labor negotiations, that can be somewhat convoluted, complicated, kind of opaque to some. That was perfect. And I just wanted to give you kudos for that. And I I hope that we can um, incorporate a lot of that educational piece as a primer for when we get to uh, more complicated topics, especially talking about what is the role of the board? Not only for us, but especially for the expectations of the community when they come to community meetings. And they're asking the board to do something. Is that even in our purview? Um, I just, I thought that was wonderful. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments, board members? Okay, seen. And thank you, Dr. Becco. I echo those comments from board member Escobedo. So you'll be bringing this back as a public hearing along with an action, or would they be two sep- or would they be two separate places?
Yes, so what I'll do is um, I'll just uh, once we get through the other uh, sunshine proposal, which is ours, um, I will then bring these back as a public hearing next board meeting. And then an action item after that on that same agenda. And that will really authorize, once we get board approval, authorize us to begin the uh, re opener negotiations.
Okay, awesome. Well, thank you. Then that means we'll move on to H five. The first reading and such, Senator, the Santa Barbara Unified reopen contract negotiation with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association.
Okay, thank you. So um, with all that as the backdrop, then this is now our uh, sunshine proposal for the re- negotiation. We noticed that um, we have selected evaluation procedures article. And um, we find the contract to be pretty stable and don't have um, other articles that we want to to reopen at all. So it's just this one article for this um, phase of negotiations.
Okay, any public comment? I don't think we have any, but I just want to make sure I'm not skipping over anyone. Sandra, any public comments on this item?
No public comment.
Okay, thank you. Uh, board members? Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, um, thank you, Dr. Becko. Very clear presentation. Uh, will we be also considering negotiation with CSEA or only SVTA?
Uh, we will be in re opener negotiations with both bargaining units. Um, I like to bring our sunshine proposal with CSEA at the same time they bring theirs. And they are not ready to bring theirs quite yet. So that should come back in either late January or early February.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Again, thank you for that presentation. Um, I'm assuming we're doing the same thing with this public hearing and action at the same time for the next board meeting. So thank you for the presentation. Uh, that will move us to our item H six.
Yes, thank you, uh, Board President Simsona. For this item, of course, we have Ms. Kenya Edison and um, she will go ahead and report. Of course, we've been on winter break, so some work done, but um, not uh, enough to report out too much today, but we also wanted to all include the insight survey uh, where we're at with that timeline. So Ms. Edison?
Thank you very much. Uh, good evening, Board uh, President, Board Members and Superintendent. I am back for our um, this is our standing report for our racial incidents on our campus uh, campuses as the Dr. Maldonado said, we were actually on break, so we don't have a lot to report. Um, but we have committed to making, being very transparent and doing this report every onboard meeting. So uh, we will proceed with that and its updates. Next slide. We've had one incident since our last reporting um, in it across at one school site. Next slide. All right, next slide, please. So as we're tracking, remember, we're tracking by grade level. So this happened at a junior high school. Um, next slide. It was an indirect, which means, remember, we talked about directs means it was with intention towards another student. Indirect, it just happened by bypass or it was within friends. It wasn't necessarily targets, targeting anyone, but it still nonetheless had impact. Next slide. Um, this was a verbal casual, so that was a use of a a racial slur, racial comment um, towards friends. That's why it's categorized as verbal casual. Um, again, remember, we're not talking about intent but impact. So that one incident at the junior high school, again, we're looking at our our longevity and our our data because we are looking for trends, we're all looking for opportunities for us to intervene and impact so that we can reduce these incidents. Next slide. We do want to bring some updates to you. Um, yes, we were on break, but work is still happening. Um, our survey window closed on December eighteenth. Um, we gave our community an opportunity to um, share their experiences across our school community. So we're excited about getting that data. Um, we're looking the, this week to receive information about the total of number of participants who have completed the survey. Um, it's being cleaned up and analyzed right now. So we're excited um, to get that data this this uh, week as well. I do want to remind you all as an MTSS district, we use data to guide decisions. And so this is a data point for us that is a MTSS prince uh, practice. Um, focus groups are fo- uh, are scheduled virtually. They'll be January seventeenth through the twentieth. Um, January twenty-first, uh, third and twenty-fourth would be our in-person focus groups. Um, if uh, we need more information, we tentatively have fo- follow-up focus groups scheduled the week of Janu- the uh, time between January twenty-fifth and February second. We're expecting to have a report to you all um, with an update and status of the assessment and analysis, January twenty-fourth. Um, we're expecting a project data analysis will occur in February, and then an assessment and analysis draft report delivered to the district no longer, no later than March fifteenth by our contracting partners. Next slide. That concludes the uh, update for you all this time. Again, it was short and sweet. Uh, we'll continue to monitor this uh, information and data and as we could commit it to with our community, be very transparent in these racial incidents. Any questions?
Uh, thank you for that report. I know, we understand that what, there was a break in there, but appreciate the work that was continued to go on, even though there was a break in there. So uh, board members, any additional comments and or questions? Okay. Not seeing any. I I'll just make a final comment. Again, appreciate bringing that update because we know these types of things, they just, they continue to go on and they don't take a break. So at least coming in and to reporting this, looking forward to that report on the on the twenty-fourth to see where where we are with that. Uh, sometimes things tend to go to sleep. This has been a heightened thing, but we want to make sure that it still stays on the forefront of what's going on so that we, as an MTSS uh, you know, district, we're giving the data to improve the environment that we do. And I appreciate, and I appreciate you saying the intent and the impact. I really appreciate that as we begin to learn and change the trends and change our environment, we have to can stay committed and stay vigilant on this as well. So, board members, I believe this brings us to uh, almost the closing of our meeting. Um, we are now going to F, uh, excuse me, that's getting my papers here, going to, we didn't have any items that we needed to bring back from consent agenda. And you have a list of the coming events. Um, on that, I'll just name a few. We have the Combating Anti-Blackness Work Group convening. And I know with the weather and things that are going on, anticipate, I'm not sure that it's going to continue on. We'll have that meeting on the eleventh. Or is it been, uh, Dr. Maldonado?
So we are sending communication. Some of these meetings that we see here will be moved to Zoom when appropriate. We just want to make sure we keep people off the road still, even though it's clear. We want to keep everyone safe. So those messages are going out for changes to any in-person to Zoom meetings.
Okay. Um, and the next one is our special board meeting. We still anticipate that being in person, correct, or unless there's some, okay. Um, all right. So I I understand moving. We have the upcoming doctor, the Martin Luther King uh, day that's coming up that we'll be observing. And then again, we have a study session on the twenty-first uh, of that. And then our regular board meeting is on January twenty-fifth, twenty-fourth, sorry. Um, that's upcoming. And then we either have a further action in February twenty-third, a little farther out as a literary action plan. So in the evening. So I think we're good with that. Um, future agenda items, I know we have a list of what we're looking at. We'll continue to work on that and we'll be more intentional about that once we get our full board seated. So just want to might be mindful of that, uh, board members. As well as our next meeting is January twelfth, starting at three fifteen. That is, that is our second round of candidates uh, interviews for the, for the board vacancy. Um, and with that, any final comments and or questions from the board or anyone, Mr. Dr. Maldonado?
Um, I want to update the board as, as we've been in this meeting, we've been in communication with some of our um, high school and junior high school leaders, particularly Dos Pueblos High School and Golita Valley Junior High School, which are deeply impacted by MTD. We have heard from MTD that they will only have sixty percent of their drivers available tomorrow as far as they can tell. So we have been putting together a plan on uh, using some of our athletic vans to try to do some uh, driving through the routes that kids typically take to the school to help out with some of that transportation. We've talked to CHP, we've talked to our, we know that our insurance will cover that. So just want to uh, let the board know and and hopefully those that are in our community know that our principals are still working hard, trying to to figure out ways that we can get kids to school tomorrow. We're hoping that the MTD will be fully routed, uh, fully staffed uh, Thursday. But we continue to ask uh, for help with making sure that our kids get to school and after school to get home safely. I just wanted to make sure that I thank principals and update the board on that item and anybody in the public that is a parent as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you for your committed diligence on that. And and I'll just conclude, everyone can, remember, stay safe. Our weather standard continues to be unstable and unpredictable. So we want to stay safe and stay vigilant for to what's going on and to the conditions. And I appreciate the communications, how quickly and efficiently you are, Dr. Maldonado, getting the word out, getting it out to the parents and obviously in the in the community. So appreciate that. Thank you, everyone who were in attendance tonight. Appreciate the many, appreciate you, board members, your time. Uh, so uh, until next time, next Thursday that we're meeting in person, uh, January twelfth at three fifteen at the district boardroom. Take care and good evening. And we conclude this meeting at seven twenty-six. Okay, all right. Thank you.